That in non-public session this morning, we approved the Gus Pond Road bid with blacktop. And I believe the amount is four hundred and twenty-two dollars and seven hundred and forty-seven cents. Is that right, Dina?
Yes.
Okay, and the other item in non-public that we did was we did move to schedule a non-meeting with town's attorney over the issue.
Judy, could I just ask you to clarify that number you just said? Cause I heard you said four hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Four hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven, right?
That's better. You didn't say that the first time.
She said cents, but I knew she meant like that.
But she didn't say four hundred and twenty-two, forty-two, forty thousand.
Just wanna make sure you're listening.
I'm listening.
Wake up, Tom.
It's a good teacher trick.
I mean, if that's all they're gonna charge us, four hundred and twenty grand, four hundred and twenty dollars, then hey, jump on that.
All right. Public, this is the time for public that wishes to address the board may do so. And I know we have one person on Zoom.
That's Judy.
Ms. Quentin, did you wish to say something this morning? I'm not hearing anything.
Yeah, we can't hear you. Can you hear us, Judy?
Maybe she went to get coffee.
No, she unmuted herself, so. This thing on mute? Hang on. I haven't heard anything coming from her. I have no clue where muted is.
Okay.
What's that mean, receiver?
Optical.
Put your phone and see if that works.
That's what I'm doing.
This is the microphone right here.
But usually you can, you know, do this to turn the volume, and it's not working.
Keep trying to get you. Sorry.
Maybe I should just take that, this off.
Maybe in the chat, ask her to put anything in the chat.
Oh, she just said, "I'm not muted at my end."
Okay, we're maybe gonna turn that off.
Well, we, uh... Oh, okay.
She can... We done? We good? I love technology.
Any info from DRA she says?
Okay, we're getting there.
Judy, can you say something?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yay, perseverance.
To being a stereotypical commercial, can you hear me now?
Yes. And so, your question or comment was?
Well, I'm, I'm here because I'm interested in the Lime Electric Aggregation materials.
Okay, okay.
But I was curious if you'd heard back from the DRA about the 2022 information.
Okay.
And I was following up because I was interested in what you've decided about the materials around the settlement, um, the abatement that you negotiated with a citizen.
Okay, so three things. One, we will be taking up the, the electric aggregation information very shortly. And we did hear from DRA, we'll be talking about that a little bit later in the meeting. And I personally forgot to follow up about whether or not we can share that abatement information.
Well, once, once the BTLA is settled, yes, I can give her a copy of...
Okay.
A piece of paper of it.
So, I guess we have not received final settlement information, but we believe it has been settled. We reached an agreement. So, once it is all a hundred percent done, you can get a copy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, do you have something for us?
I am just looking forward to a school district meeting tonight and a, an entirely pleasant, uh, town meeting next Tuesday.
Excellent, very good. So are we. Um, I know why you're here. I know why you're here. I'm not sure why you're here.
My name is Hunter Snyder. I'm sitting now on the Lime Electric Aggregation Committee. Hi. Nice to see you all again. So I'm here purely to listen and hear more about the progress with...
All right. Perfect, welcome. I'm sorry I didn't recognize you. A very good friend of mine who's just turned ninety-five likes to say, "I'm old, you know. I can't remember things." I'm starting to wear that as a badge. All right, then, let's move on to discuss the community power coalition of New Hampshire contract. And we had a conversation, as we said we would, with town council. Went for about an hour, little over perhaps, and was a good conversation. I'm not quite sure exactly how to sum it up, except that, yes, if we continue to go forward before the town joins the coalition, we'd have to go before town meeting, which you folks already know. I guess there's some positives and some negatives. David, do you have a summary?
I don't know about a summary, but I have a little bit of follow-up. I was curious, so in, in the, one of the things in the JPA, the Joint Powers Agreement that we're being asked to sign, is a statement that says that no signatory will do anything to disrupt the tax status of the CPC and H. But then it doesn't say anything about what that tax status is.
Oh, okay.
And they, I know from my past life as a tax lawyer, that they probably don't qualify as a 501(c)(3). So that got me kinda curious. So I, I just went on their website and sent, you know, there's a, probably the last thing they expect, but there's a place where you can ask a question. So I asked that question. And about an hour or two later, I got a call back from a very well-informed consultant for the organization, who explained to me that they're tax exempt as a state, a, a, a state organized entity, and they're also tax exempt as a 501(c)(4), just a social welfare organization. And I just, while I had him on the phone, I just chatted with him, and he basically confirmed his view that the things that we've been told by the folks on our committee and the, the, our lawyer were correct. That joining the, that signing the, the Joint Powers Agreement doesn't subject the Town of Lime to any liability. And that even if that, if the CPC and H were to incur a liability, for example, under CIRCLA for environmental or what, you know, some massive ruinous liability, that the mere fact of us being a member and, and having signed the J, the J, Joint Powers Agreement does not, would not, in his view, subject the Town of Lime to any kind of liability as a member. So, um...
It's, okay.
Seems to me what we've been told by our committee, which has been verified, on that basis, I think I would be comfortable signing the JPA and allowing the town to go forward with further exploration and, or allowing our committee to go forward with further explo, exploration. My own personal view is that that, it looks like a lot of that stuff is very technical in nature. And I wonder if it wouldn't be helpful to our exploratory committee to have someone with deep technical knowledge on the committee. I'm, I was thinking about Mark Bollinger or, or Stephen Dewig, someone like that who seems to be, those folks seem, to me, as an outsider, to be pretty immersed in this stuff. Be curious to know whether the committee has a view on that about, I, I know Judy has repeatedly said, well, we're sort of learning this as we go, which is fine, it's good, but it might be helpful to have someone who has some, some more technical background about some of this stuff as we, as we get deeper into the weeds.
Agreed. Yeah, at some point, we're gonna really have to know what, what this is all about. You know, certainly before bringing to the town. We will certainly reach out to both those people. Yeah, this is the first. I met Steve Dewig the other night and...
That guy lives this stuff, I think.
Right, so he could be a great resource, whether he's on the committee or sort of a consultant to the committee. That would be really helpful. And so...
Just another point of information. So I, Stephen is my colleague. So I'm a research scientist at Dartmouth in the Engineering School. And I sit in the, the Energy Institute, and Stephen and I do work together. So I'm happy to liaise with Stephen and I.
Also, you may have some of the necessary technical expertise as well.
Yeah, I do work in energy policy and planning.
Are in my agreements.
No, no, it's okay.
It's entirely technical.
I thought that was the case, but I didn't wanna...
So, um, one of my main concerns was signing this and going forward. In the eventuality that we go even further forward, are we either in debtting Lime, you know, there's startup costs and there are other costs that have already been spent? And are we gonna create a cost for the town? That seemed to be alleviated when we spoke with our attorney. And the other question I had for him was, well, is this a opt-in, opt-out? Or we go forward, does everybody in Lime have to join whatever the solution, the project or proposal is? And I was reassured that, no, I think it's a opt-out.
That's right.
So we need to make sure that everybody knows that even if, as with the solar, where we said, this is a goal for a hundred percent solar, if you can't or don't want to do it, you don't have to. We need to make it clear for folks. So I was reassured on that aspect of it. So I, I...
Just a follow-up on Judy saying opt-out, that's kinda like the apps on the, on your iPhone. Or free, and you hit it, and then you gotta go back to figure out how to get out of it. So opt-out needs to be very easy.
Yep, yeah.
Do you guys happen to know, is the opt-out done, is it one time for all, or is it an annual thing you have to do?
I can't answer honestly that. I don't know. But, um, yeah, that's a thing we will definitely find out. But that is a thing where, and I'm not sure of the mechanism actually for opting out, whether it'll be like just a checkbox on a website, or whether it's a, you know, that's again, the true mechanics of it, we're good.
Right, right. And that's probably what this next year will be, mechanics of those things and the mechanics of where we're headed. And we did note that, you know, a, a main goal of this group is also to move from coal-fired or gas-fired generation to a greener generation.
I think right now, the opt-out is either at their website or a phone number, and you can call it. And I, the committee would certainly make sure that we were responsible and making sure that everybody had easy access to that, cause you're right, Ben, some of those things, it's a rabbit hole.
You could kinda get in the loop.
In our first meeting, or the last meeting we had, we talked about the communication strategy, not just for what the offer was for participating in this program, but also how townspeople would engage with it or disengage with it. So I think from the outset, the goal is for it to be very clear what, what the offer is and how one can move in and out of it.
Great. Thank you for that. And boy, I thank you, all three of you, for coming to the meeting and Judy attending with her, Ms. Quentin attending with her interest, Mr. Brown, so...
We only have to call her Ms. Quentin on the minutes.
On the minute. Okay. Phew. All right. Now, do we need to take a formal vote, do you think, or consensus of this board? What's your...
Before we sign the JPA, which I think is what's on our, let me make a motion. I would move that we sign the, the JPA to allow our committee to move forward with further exploration of this, of the CPC and H.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor say aye?
David, aye?
Ben, aye.
Judy, aye? Okay.
Thank you very much.
You've just created a lot of work for us.
As long as it's for you, and not for us, we're delighted.
You guys should change your name to the Lime Electric Coalition.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Dina must have it. Do you see this somewhere?
So if you need to get one, I, I did, I, I think I did drop off a hard copy, but it, and you have one too.
It's on their website too.
Okay.
I do, I just didn't bring it in here with me.
Yeah, all right. Well, let me know if you have any questions.
Oh, great. Thanks, James. Thank you all.
Hi.
This is this. Okay. Okay, that one is done. I would kind of like to move to... Well, let's just do this in order. Ben, what time do you have to leave?
Um, probably about ten, I don't know, twenty, I think.
Okay, okay.
We're gonna get done early.
We've got Sean with us.
Oh, you gotta stay.
Tom is here to talk about Tascow.
Yep.
Oh, awesome.
So let's move to that. So, we have, uh, had Tascow come in, and Sean, and Tascow, and Dina, all looked at the setup here. This is with two focuses. One, I believe, is some security cameras, and the other is security entrance, perhaps changes and some costs. And Sean, would you like to walk us through some of those issues? I thought we would jump to this since we have you with us right now.
Sure, yep, that's perfectly fine. Uh, so Tim Supernaut, who is the director of Tascow Securities, he came and met with Dean and I on Tuesday. We explained what we were kind of looking for in that, uh, we're trying to get some cameras within the interior of this, of our entryway here in the town office building, and one on the outside. Update the cameras that are in the police department. And, uh, we talked with him about sort of what we have been discussing in regards to, uh, the doors and the little entryway where Jordan is, and the door here, and the window, and everything that we have currently. We mentioned that there was talk about maybe switching this door with the door going into the town clerk slash tax collector office. Um, and his immediate response was, "Why would you do that? I would never suggest it." And his explanation is, is that, you know, the solid door that you have right now is more secure than a door with glass in it.
But if the door is open, it's not secure at all.
That is true. So a door that's closed is always more secure than one that's not, that's not. And, you know, you don't want to have vision, visual, you know, for other people to see inside there is not really what we want. That's kind of a security breach. He understands why this big window is here and why the gate is there. However, in his security world, it's not optimal. But he didn't give us, you know, he said that it might, it's something that we should look at, but, you know, it's not his...
It's not his main focus.
Yes. He was, um, glad to hear that we had talked about doing something in the front of Jordan. And, you know, one of his, one of his other concerns is that, so nowhere in this building is there a steel door with a steel frame. That was one of the things that I specifically asked the building committee about when they were building this building. Because, I mean, the police department has wooden doors, front and back. That's really not secure. You know, a metal door isn't, it certainly isn't bulletproof. However, it's a little less likely that somebody's gonna try to kick in a steel door when they are a wooden door. And after Tim and I left here and went over to our side, you know, one of the things that he kind of reiterated to me was, especially over there, is if I were you, I'd try to get some steel doors, cause this is just not, you know, it's just not a good thing, whether we have cameras or not. So...
Will you just tell them about the solution for Patty wanting to be able to see who's coming?
Yes, yes. So, before you move on from, from that, could I ask?
I, I would be in favor of spending the money to get steel doors for the police department, steel doors and frames. And if you think there are one or two, or however many places in the, in this main building where there need to be, uh, more robust doors and frames, I'm in favor of that. But I, but, um, so what I would, what would be useful to me at least, would be if you went out and, I know it's extra work, I'm sorry about that, but if you could, if you can get someone to, I don't know, Dina, do we need to just put it at a bid, a project like that, or?
Well, we should get a couple estimates.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to have something I can act on. So if you can, if there's a way to, to make this an actionable item for us, I'm happy to...
Well, I think today was about telling you the info and getting exactly that from you.
Right, exactly.
On the board.
So, yeah, and I, you can move on, but I may come back to the closed door with a window versus the open door, whether it's steel or wood, and some mid-step...
Patty's wanting to see who's coming, can that be achieved by a monitor in there?
Yes.
They're looking at all of...
That's the solution.
That is the solution. So Tim said that he, they can install the, it's a simple, it's called open...
Open eye?
Open eye system.
We have that in our house.
P, anybody that's in there can click on the camera, go to the camera system and have it either on their own monitor, or they could put it on a separate monitor if they really needed to have life-size form, uh, so that they could see who is coming and who is entering the building. So that is a live...
It's a live...
Right, it's, it's, yep.
Turn on anything.
Nope, it's a live feed. They can see it. And, yeah.
It's a perfect solution, actually.
Well, but there's also, there is a comfort level of, there's a difference.
Now, what, what is that?
Between the perfect mechanical solution and maybe a not-so-perfect, but more comfortable solution as a, as maybe a first step. That's kind of where my thought was going, but I wanna hear the rest because...
What's that glass right now that's in front of the town clerk's office?
Uh, it's only a tempered glass. It's not, I mean, you could, you could break that with one of those chairs. There's...
So that, that's, that's, I mean, one of the comments Debbie and Patty and they all talk about is that if anybody came in with serious intent to do harm with a firearm, they're sitting ducks.
Right.
Whereas you go down to the Hannover Police Station, I'm sure that's not tempered glass that you're gonna throw a chair through.
No, absolutely not. You know, one of the, and one of the other things that Tim and I talked about was, the ability for either Jordan or someone in the town clerk's office to be able to push a button to lock the exterior door. If, if, so I'm assuming that at a point, they're gonna maybe keep it so everybody has to ring in? Or is that just on Jordan's door?
It won't be on Jordan's door anymore. The only time people ring in is when that front door is locked, and, and we're not open to the public or, you know, somebody's here working alone or whatever.
Right.
And somebody can buzz the buzzer, and then we can choose to let him, talk to him, and choose to let him in or not. The buzzer on Jordan's door, I mean, I don't know, once, once that new section gets all separated and she's got bulletproof glass and a little window thing there, then, you know, people can just go through that first door.
Right. So one of the, and so what I had talked to Tim about is what if they, if, could we make it so that people on that side, either, either office had the ability during normal business hours, if they saw someone walking towards the building with a firearm, or it looked like it was a threatening situation, if they could close that door immediately, if they could lock it?
The outside door?
Yes.
Cause we just made it so the outside door doesn't lock.
Well, you know, the, the second interior door, you know? If there's a, if there's an automatic button that they could push to lock it. So that's another thing that I asked him about.
And there should be a steel door too, because otherwise it just...
So Sean, there's obviously levels of security here. You know, one thing is just putting in cameras so that the Hannover dispatcher, you, have access to see what's going on. Another thing is, you know, beefing up the door so somebody at night can't come in and kick stuff in and steal documents or make mischief. And what we're talking about here, if I understand correctly, is really fortifying this place so that there's bulletproof glass and, you know, auto-locking doors. I mean, it seems to me that level of security makes this place a lot less friendly. You know, what, just for town people who come in, you know, gosh, you go in and there's this big inch-thick glass and you're talking to the clerk through that. I, I, I'm not saying that's not justified. I just wanna get your assessment. Do you think that there's a, a real risk of that sort of, you know, are, are we really fortifying this place to try to, to resist armed intruders? And is that a, a, a likely scenario, do you think? Or, I mean, where, where, where do you think we need, we ought to be striking the balance on this?
Well, like Tim said, you know, if you run New Hampshire's homicide rates compared to New York's homicide rates, the state of New Hampshire is much higher per cap, because of the per capita. You know, we are, you know, the, the amount of phone calls that dispatch centers are receiving about school hoaxes, you know, there is no...
Saw there was one eleven on this week.
There is no way for us to determine whether it's really a hoax. So what happens when a hoax hap, when a hoax call comes is that we go there and disrupt the entire school to look through the entire building and, you know, hope that there is nothing, hope that we don't find a bomb, hope that, you know, there isn't somebody waiting. So whether it's a, whether it's a hoax or not, the same disruption occurs. And it's only a matter of time, in my opinion, before people start making the phone call, "Guess what? There, there's been a bomb planted at the Town of Lime, uh, you know, selectman's office, town offices." Then, you know, Tim's point is that it's much easier to explain why we did what we did before something happened, rather than going, "Oh shit." If we had done what we talked about five years ago, maybe this wouldn't have either happened or wouldn't have been so bad. You know? In his line of work, the, the security industry has gotten ten times busier and much more complicated than it ever has been because of everything that's happening, you know? For a lot of people that live in New Hampshire and were here in nineteen ninety-seven when the Colebrook shootings took place, none of us want that to happen. And it's, you know, I mean, the, the fact that this group came in three weeks ago now and basically terrorized our employees because they wanted to...
They were a scary group.
Prove a point. Um, you know, they knew their boundaries, I'll give them that, to a point. They still pushed it a little too far. But their point was to come here, wreak havoc, make people feel uncomfortable. And what they were really hoping for was that the police were gonna get sent, which didn't happen. It had only been four days prior that these, a group, some individuals from the same group were in the Town of Hannover's building and doing the same things, you know? So we do not know who is coming and going. I mean, for the most part, Patty and Sharon and Dina and I, and, you know, we know who lives here, and we know who should be and shouldn't be coming here. But, you know, people drive into this lot in out-of-state registered vehicles all the time for one reason or another, whether it's somebody, whether it's a, um, you know, a real estate... you know, a real estate agent looking for the tax card, whether it's whomever, a vendor, we, we don't know. Um, but, I mean, we all don't want the, you know, not-friendly atmosphere. But, I mean, we have employees to protect. Um, and I think that in this era, in this day and age, if we are not doing what we can to ensure the safety of, I mean, that would be just like the board saying, well, you know what, we really, we really don't want the police department to carry weapons anymore, and we just want you to go out and use your voice and this and that. I would tell you, huh, okay, well, you do it.
What are the folks who are affected by this, did you have a sense about that, like Patty and Dev and
I can't speak for anybody else, but I will say that I know that Patty and I have had many conversations about this. Um, you know, she is very adamant that we are welcoming and that somebody doesn't feel like they shouldn't come in or can't come in, or it's a prison, or, you know, whatever. Um, but yet, you know, she knows the reality of this, of the threat and things are changing.
Bulletproof glass in front of the thing with little grills that you have to talk to or microphones, that, that, that definitely affects the character of the town office.
My opinion is that, um, I get all that, it, it isn't probably what we would like to see in Lyme. And that's exactly what Patty said to me the other day, I hate that it is changing to something like this, but for me, I, I don't, I don't think, I remember one other time feeling threatened, um, but I don't want, I don't want to leave and have somebody say, oh my god, what if we had done that? You know, somebody wouldn't have gotten hurt or whatever, I think you have to be sensible and you guys have to decide.
But we need to see some.
Problem deciding, now, is the vault a safe room?
We, we have.
You guys go, get into there and shut the doors and?
That's what our, our, our safety plan is, that's why, that's why we used to lock our door and it was a push button to let people in. There's a lock on the door, we used to leave the door locked.
For a second, is there a, a closed meeting, I, I, I just, I worry a little bit talking about what our security plans are in a public session, that anyone could go look up or watch Rich's video on, and, uh.
I think any further discussion, any decision-making needs.
What we will do.
Yeah, should be, I, I think it's good for people to know that we are going to upgrade security here, but I think the details of it.
All right, was that rich?
Need to be.
So, if, if I may, um, whenever I think about, um, these kinds of security questions, uh, in the computer world, the question you ask is, what's your threat model, that's the big term. What do you expect the problem is that you're trying to protect against? And, I mean, and this is important for a bunch of reasons, if you said, um, uh, I mean, if you thought there were gonna be people coming with guns every week, cameras is not the answer. If you think that there are just these First Amendment auditor guys coming once a year, cameras might be a very good thing and, you know, all these really serious protective measures that we're talking, that we've mentioned, um, would be overkill. And so, I don't know what the, well. Yeah, no, I mean, and that was awful, I mean, that.
That's all, it only takes one of those to be.
And, and what, so what is your, what is, what's your threat model, what is your set of likely things and what's the likelihood, and then what countermeasures would you consider? And I think that's, that's the question, I don't, I don't know, and, um, how can you folks find out? Good answers to this.
The, the way we judge threat levels, and I'll tell you that, uh, so in the law enforcement world, what I perceive as a threat is probably way different than what any of you perceive as a threat. Or make you uneasy, um, you know, I, I have been in this building when there have been people at this window right here yelling and screaming at our town clerks because they were disgruntled, irritated about whatever it was, uh, irritated about a decision that the select board made, and I mean, I have witnessed it on many occasions.
Well, I sat here and had somebody come from there and ratchet up several degrees.
And that's the other thing, you know, I mean, any one of our committees could be in here in a meeting any night.
Yeah.
And somebody who's not happy with our energy committee, somebody who, you know, the, 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 listen to the statistics from the energy committee, well, if you get solar panels and this and that, and they haven't received all the money back that they thought they were gonna, I mean, we, you don't know what's gonna set somebody off, and, you know, the fact that somebody comes in to talk about one thing, well, maybe he's already angry, or she's angry about something else, and this is just, ends up being the catalyst to an explosion, um, you know, the, the ability for dispatch to see inside this building is absolutely imperative, um, if.
And I think that that, that is the case because I think there was some sense that the folks that were here when we revisited were kind of left hanging, they didn't.
Exactly.
And that was not a good sense.
Right, and, you know, I mean, dispatch, as soon as there was a kind of a brief explanation of what was going on here, dispatch knew exactly who was here.
Right.
And what was going on and what they wanted, and that's why dispatch did not do.
They couldn't have done a little better job communicating with the folks that called them.
They could have, um, however, you know, it is a central dispatch station and there's lots of things going on, but anyway.
In your, in your professional judgment as the chief of police here, do you think that we need to harden this facility to, in anticipation of an armed at- attack, do you think that that's a likely, not even likely, but, but, um, something that we ought to be doing?
I mean, I think out, all of our exterior doors should be steel, and I said that since they started planning this building. Um, so I would continue to say that all of our exterior doors should be, should be steel in nature. I, I mean, I think, you know, bulletproof glass, you know, it's, I mean, this glass right here is relative, it's thick. I mean, the, the nice thing is, is that they have the gate right here, the only thing that I didn't say to Patty and Sharon and Debbie at the time was that, you know, one of the things that they could have done was pull the gate down.
They have to physically pull the gate down, it, it's not automatic.
Uh, yeah, I know, and so maybe that's something we look at as well.
So, I, I would like to
But.
Move on because we want your expertise, we want our questions answered, but I really don't think it should be
Yep.
put out there right now, and, and I think, um, we need some suggestions in writing from TSCO, we need to think ourselves about what it will look like and what it will feel like. We need to talk with the other folks here, but I, I'm really, I want the public to know that we are concerned and that we are going to beef up security, but exactly what we do, I don't believe, it would be pretty evident when we do it, but I, I don't believe it should be out there to be able to be deciphered so people can plan a way around it.
And I would, I, I would just add, I've known Tim and liked him, and he's, they did the security in our house too, I, I think he's a great guy. But he's in the business of selling security equipment at the end of the day, so really the person I want, I want the judgment of is you. I, I want to know what you think we ought to be doing, and I expect, you know, it seems to me that there's a balance there, you know, we, we, we could rebuild this whole building out of, you know, reinforced concrete and, and make it into a bunker, we, we don't need to do that probably. You know, at the, at the very bottom end, you know, we could, I don't know, just do the doors and add a camera or two. I, I would imagine there's someplace in between there, but, but I'm looking for the judgment of someone who's got experience in the, in, in this, in this realm and who, who, you know, know, can balance sort of the risks against the costs. Not, not just the economic cost, but also the cost to the people who work here who probably don't want to feel like they're working in a prison.
Absolutely, okay.
So, maybe we can schedule you for non-public at the next meeting that we have?
Yep.
And we can have a more candid discussion and move forward.
Is there a statutory provision in non-public for matters pertaining to security, or?
Uh, I'm aware if there is or is not, we can look into that, but I think where the safety of employees is concerned, I will take the hit if we need to take a hit.
Okay.
One of the first years that I was a selectman, many years ago, when the office was in the basement of the library, it was my delightful job to be able to tell a person approaching that they were not welcome to come to our meeting because they were carrying a concealed weapon. And it was very uncomfortable, and this was years ago, and that happens in this little town too, and this person was very angry about something else, and I thought, oh boy, this will be a short term. He's gonna be now angry at me and that'll be the end of it, but it was very gracious, it wasn't a problem, but, you know, it's, it's been an ongoing concern for many years, and I think enough said at this point, but we'll talk to you in two weeks.
Thank you, Sheldon.
Thank you very, very much. I appreciate your candor and looking into this, we do want everybody here to be safe, and the public that comes in to be safe. All right, now the fun part, we have some minutes, February twenty-third, public and non-public.
I'll move on.
I'll second, I have no comments to either side.
David, Ben, okay, all those in favor say aye.
David aye.
Ben aye.
Judy aye, twenty-third, public and non-public are approved. The, um, we have a set of non-public minutes from February sixteen. Um, two sixteen, I think they are fairly brief. I will move those.
So, I'll second.
Thank you, all those in favor say aye.
David aye.
Judy aye, okay, all the minutes are approved, my blood pressure is going back down.
Really, do you get blood pressure increase for over the minutes?
No, no, it wasn't the minutes. Um, the manifest, have folks had a chance to look at the manifest?
I'll hold it. I, I looked at them too, they're okay.
They look okay to you too, okay, so Ben and David, all those in favor say aye.
Ben aye.
David aye.
And Judy aye, and those are approved. That's the word I was looking for earlier, Dina, manifest, it's one of those big words. Mind hazard mitigation plan update. Dina, would you like to introduce this topic?
Sure, cause you're all gonna love me so much, or whoever gets stuck with it. Um, the, it's, we're, we're doing an update, we have a grant, and each, um, department needs to have, um, a representative, so the select board needs to choose one of you who will come to. Right now, we've scheduled eight, but it ends up being six to eight meetings.
Six to eight meetings, two hours each?
And there, yeah, I believe, maximum two hours apiece.
Are they during the day or at night?
Sometimes you're gonna have to go to all of them, um, well, and they're by Zoom, and it's gonna be, um, one o'clock on those Wednesdays I had listed, but I didn't send it with me, but.
What exactly is the hazard mitigation plan?
Uh, when we have any kind of a town-wide emergency, it's the plan that's followed and, you know, like the windstorm we had when everybody was, you know, trapped in their houses, and, you know, it makes, it just gives the plan of what to do and what step, and who's in charge of what, and that kind of stuff. And this is just an update, so, from being part of the, write a new one after a lot of years that we didn't have one, this will be a breeze.
I'm happy to do it if it's, if it's a Wednesday during the day and I can zoom from home.
Okay.
Unless Ben or David would.
No, I'm not gonna fight you for it.
Would do that.
Great.
I don't feel particularly qualified to speak to you and get that sort of stuff.
Well, all of this.
Everybody that is on the thing are very qualified, so.
So, the select board goal is to just sit there and shut up?
Because it's just a, a rule, it's, they have to be there, and, and actually, the select board is the one that makes the decision with the EMD to kick everything into gear, that's really the selectmen's job. But each department has its own, you know, stuff it's in charge of.
Okay.
Thank you, Judy.
You're welcome.
Or Michael thanks you too.
Okay, those two there.
Harvey was just over the other day and he told me you were slacking and don't spend any time on select board matters, so, I'm glad to get, get this right with you.
Nice.
Okay. We'll have words later. He'll be installing a metal door to his shop. Um, we got a letter that isn't on the agenda here, um, from DOT about, uh, bridge aid funding for rehabilitation and replacement of the bridge from on Pinnacle Road over Trout Brook. And this is looking to have us sign on for bridge aid funding for the above-noted bridge. It looks like we would have a twenty percent share, amounting to about two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars and seven hundred and twenty. And that, uh, the bridge will cost approximately one million, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred dollars. So, my inclination would be not to turn down that kind of money, the bridge needs repair, so.
And, and, I was speaking to Aaron Allen, who's a select board member in Orange, and they got a similar letter, except they were put on a lottery for one of their bridges, so.
Oh.
So, that's a lot better letter than being put on a lottery.
Says we can't guarantee that funding will be available, but we would like to know if you're interested in applying for the funds.
Right, that's all you're committing to, you're committing to saying to them, yes, we're interested in hearing about it, and it's a ten-year plan, and you know, it's not gonna be until after two thousand twenty-seven anyways.
Which is only.
Not very far away, I know.
So, you have the original, so.
I do.
Um, I think, I will move that, that we have Dina sign the original and send it back to DOT with, yes, we are interested.
I'll second that.
Okay.
By the way, where is this bridge?
It's on Pinnacle Road.
Yeah, I know Pinnacle Road, but it's right near my house, but.
It's doubled too, but.
Pinnacle Road is near my house.
Yeah, yeah, sort of, it's the one that goes from the town up to the, up to the, uh.
Four Corners, round, and it's.
Gotta be across.
It's actually not a bridge bridge, it's two humongal culverts, and that's, they classify that as a bridge.
And is this right at Whipple Hill, where Whipple Hill comes in?
It's over Trout Brook, so that would be Whipple Hill. Pinnacle, up, up the end where, if you go way up Pinnacle, then it turns to dirt, and you go down the road a little bit, Pinnacle, uh, Whipple Hill's on there. So, just past that, there's a big.
Yep, okay, it's right up in there, it's before the Four Corners.
Yes. And actually, just so you know, this is one of the bridges, obviously, it's a red-listed bridge, and it was on the original plan that we did to seven years ago, six or seven years ago, as one of the top bridges that we needed to address first, so.
Yeah, we have.
I, I take that road all the time, I just can't picture a bridge in there.
You're not, you're, you're not, you're not seeing a bridge, you're just, you're going over a culvert, which the road looks the same, unless you're looking over the bank.
And really, so replacing and repairing that culvert is a million and a half dollar project?
Two, two, four-foot culverts, I think they are, yeah, they're huge.
I would, yeah, might as well whack that, does it really cost a million and a half bucks to repair, repair a couple of culverts?
Well, here's what, well, I was trying, I was trying, no, 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 I, I, no, I'm just gonna make this, uh, makes it more sense to you.
Yeah.
I was trying to remember what we spent on Goose Pond, but I can't. I was trying to remember what we spent on Goose Pond, but I can't. But what happens, and this is not meant to be disrespectful to the state or anything, but they have all these protocols they have to meet. So theirs ends up costing a couple times more than if we just decided to go out and have the bridge repaired and hire somebody to do it. It would, I'm not, I don't know what it would be, but it would be less than this. But we wouldn't, it would cost more than $234,720 for us to do it.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, five or seven.
So this is a deal.
Okay.
Even though it'll cost them more to do it.
Okay, so they're gonna spend a million and a half, but our pocket cost is gonna be less than what it would cost them to do it.
Our pocket is $234,720.
Correct, I know. Which is less than what it would cost us to do it ourselves.
Well, and that's kind of discouraging that the, the state has to spend three times more than it really costs to do work like that.
Very sad.
Probably paying their engineers and blah, blah, blah.
Right.
It's a big group that they have to answer to. I wanna move.
Thank you for remembering to remember.
Any, you're welcome. Town meeting, last town meeting reminders before Ben has to leave. And that is, we have a warrant, just to refresh, that town operating budget, which the budget committee, Dick Jones, will speak to. We can answer questions. Ben and Scott are gonna talk to Article Five, which is block grant appropriation. Article Six will be the fire department. Article Seven will be the fire department. Article Eight will be Scott Highway Road Agent. Ben, you and Scott will be Article Nine, which is again, more money for the Goose Pond Road project. Ten will be fire department. Article Eleven is In-N-Out. Article Twelve is not us. I am looking for fourteen now, Article Thirteen now. Article Fifteen is to re-adopt the veterans' tax credit. Sean will be speaking to that. I will follow up if need be. Riches, Article Sixteen, the board, that's the petition warrant article board will speak to that if necessary. So it looks like that's pretty straightforward. There needs to be a selectman at the town meeting. And the voting, so from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Town meeting, you want me to?
Town meeting starts at nine. Do you?
I had it on my calendar to come the day before too, that.
At five o'clock, he'll be set up, that'd be great. Monday at five.
Well, we gotta be there for town meeting.
But town, we all have to be there at nine. Someone has to be there at seven. I'm happy to do that, or if one of you two want it. And then after town meeting, we have to do the rest of the afternoon, so.
I can stay right after town meeting for whatever.
Okay. So.
Whatever you want.
Okay, do you, you're not an early person though.
Usually not, but.
Okay, I can do the 7:00 AM. And then we'll be at town meeting nine to 12-ish. And then he'll stay and then if you can come and do a couple hours and then I'll come at the very end.
Okay.
Okay, that sounds pretty good. Kind of casual, but. Now, we also have one other piece of information that I know people are really interested in. Yesterday, I believe, we just heard from the DRA. Dina, I will let you introduce what we got. And I think we also heard from Todd, you called him, which was terrific. And let's present that information.
All right, you guys have it in your packet. So I was notified that they had released our ratio study report. Whoops, and now I have the wrong thing.
Here, just switching.
I had the unofficial, don't release one. So yeah, so the 2022 final ratio study report with the supplemental sales has been sent. So it is. The, the weighted mean is 81.7. The COD is 13.6 and the PRD is 1.0.
Which is a perfect score.
Exactly, so, and I was gonna pull out Todd's little, Todd sent an email just confirming and reiterating that the two most important things that show fairness of property values and no bias is the COD and the PRD. And the COD has to be 20 or lower, 20% or lower. And ours is 13.6. And the PRD needs to be between 0.98 and 1.03. And ours is one. So in Todd's words, it was perfect. So that's the info we got. And then we also, part of this report, the supple, has the supplemental sales, which we will publicize as long as the board is okay with this on the web. Jordan will make a link for it. And it has the codes, has how many, you know, it just has more information. And it has the sales that they actually used. And then the excluded sales listed also.
So after this meeting, sometime this afternoon, that information will become available?
Yes. And we will post both of these documents.
Is there the analogous information for last year? Do we have that posted somewhere?
Yeah, well, that was gonna be my next question was, I, I think, I don't, I'm not positive if 21 was put on there or not.
We should put it up.
But if it's not there, we should, okay.
Yes.
I think anyways, I must better do it.
No, I'll put everything out.
Well, I think we should on the homepage just make, because this has been, you know, talked about so much and it, and it, and it is important information for people to be able to just look up without having to hunt through all the DRA stuff.
Right.
So we'll have a green tab that is dedicated to the equalization ratio. And then we can just put every year in there as we go.
That'd be great. And if you can, will Jordan do that, I hope? And if she can dedicate the afternoon to getting those up?
Yeah.
And make sure we have the finals, not the drafts?
Right.
And.
Thank you.
Yes.
And then any questions, you're welcome, thank you. I'm glad it came when it did. Any questions or are you guys okay? As in, as you see in the letter, it tells you that if you're, if you still have questions or, you know, whatever, before they final, final, finalize it, you should, we should let them know ASAP.
I don't have any.
I, I don't, I looked at it briefly, well, more than briefly. And I was feeling quite comfortable with what they have done. There seemed to be good explanation. And then to hear from Todd that he felt that it showed fairness and the 1.0 is a perfect score, so. And, and I do believe there are always anomalies and I would not want. I would also encourage anyone who felt that their particular situation was not fair to please come to the select board, please file an abatement request and let us look at that.
Right.
We're, we're still at a grand total of two abatement requests for.
Yeah, and the deadline has passed. So that's how many you will get this year for abatements. I do have one question. The little paragraph that was written with the information, can we post that also?
Yes.
The, this one right here.
I'm moving it here.
The one that is here? Yes.
Yes.
Please. Okay. That's what I was actually looking for, my notes were covering it. That worked out very well.
Good.
All right, so we've got that. We reviewed the warrant, albeit extremely quickly. Town meeting setup is at five o'clock on Monday. Tonight is the school district meeting at six o'clock. If anyone had missed that and.
I just, I watched Trudy's library thing. I thought that was much better than Little Town Meeting because nobody was intimidated by the crowd. And they spoke at length and in detail about.
And you forget that people can really see you.
No, I, I think there are a lot of Little Town Meetings and, you know, you're impaled in front of the crowd and words don't come out. Everybody got cancerous.
I thought it was great.
And I think everybody that was running actually.
Was there.
Was there. And Judy did, that's why I was encouraged to have her do it this year because last year I felt the same way. It was really important and it, it, to me, it gave access to even more people than going to the school.
Well, I feel like I learned a lot about, you know, even though you can read about the school candidates, schoolwork candidates.
To see them and.
But I really felt like I learned a lot about all three of them. It was good.
Yeah, it's on YouTube, that's where we watch.
Yeah, she, she put it up.
There's plenty of access.
Oh, that's cool. Will you send me the YouTube link? I would like to watch that.
The last thing I have is, I hope, possibly, potentially, hopefully, the last non-public session that we three need to have with an ongoing report that we've been trying to follow up with. Do you have anything else for us, Dina?
I do, I have a couple things that need to be signed. We have this, that was part of the manifest, there's that word I couldn't think of too, it must be contagious. This is the last, this was the last part of the settlement with Public Service of New Hampshire. And instead of taking it off their tax bill, it was forgotten. So this is just to make us right, make it all even steven.
Is this that evergreen thing?
Yes. Yeah, they have three different names. Public Service of New Hampshire, Public Services. And then while you guys are signing, Patty gave me some appointments for assistant moderators.
Oh, okay.
And all that stuff that really should be done.
So town meeting appointments.
Yep. And then there's also a new energy committee appointment that Jim Norris asked for.
Okay, so we can, I, I can. I can pass those around?
Yep. So there's the town meeting ones and this is the energy committee one.
Thank you. You're welcome. Okay, so we'll sign those and then, um, if there is nothing else, I'm going to move that we go into non-public session because I wanna grab Ben before he leaves.
Okay.
And this is.
Can I ask you a quick question before you go and make the motion?
Okay.
Can I need this lease here for you guys to sign? It's the same one you sign every year for the night calls.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Has, the rent hasn't gone up at all?
She's, no, not unless you wanna put it up, but she's, um, she's gonna be gone for quite a while, so. And it runs out while she's gone.
Okay.
She was nervous, so we wanted to get it signed right away.
Okay.
If you so choose.
Are we comfortable that the rent is still appropriated? You know, there's been eight, eight, 10% inflation.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's up to you guys. I mean, it's, um.
Well, I would say if we leave it the same this year, we definitely would put it up next year.
Should we, why don't we do that? Why don't we give her a little, a non-verbal, a non-written warning? You know, like there's inflation, then we gotta ramp, ramp it up a little bit. So next year there might be a.
Perfect.
So am I correct, you're going to non-public now?
We are going to.
Then I'll start picking up my toys.